We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Here.
Gary.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Reed.
Here.
Here. Changes to the agenda, we're going to remove item one for the public hearing. Are there any other changes?
I don't have any.
Okay, we will open up at this time for public comment. Anyone with comments for council is welcome to come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes. Sir, I'll let you know when you have about thirty seconds left.
Okay. My name is Don Dobchuk. I just called me because when the housing rehab program started, I just basically happened to be online and saw that it was available. And I came into both of the meetings and everything. And when I came here, I'd been waiting to see what the results are. And as I went in last week, I picked up again the housing rehab program. And at that time, it showed the area that they were going to rehab, which was not my area. I had no way of knowledge of this. There's very, it's very difficult to get stuff online. Nobody reads the newspapers anymore. And so basically, what happened is, they even came out to my house. If I wasn't in the area, why did they do this?
Well, there's two rounds, so I can answer that one for you.
Okay.
So round two is the entire city. Round one was a specified area. We have not yet been released for round two. We are hoping soon, and we keep getting told soon. So, round two has not been sent out yet. We have done some paperwork with NCICG to move forward, but we're just waiting on our final grants agreement to get issued to us. And then we'll be working on round two.
Okay, is that, then there's only a total of ten houses?
There's still ten houses, and that's anywhere within city limits.
Okay. Now that, but you have to re-establish yourself again?
Yes, you know, there'll be a public meeting and information on the new applications for that round.
Oh, okay. Well, that clears it up. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We're, so we're ready to go.
Okay.
We just have to wait for permission to move forward.
Good evening. My name is John Franklin. I'm Chief of Police here in Streeter. And I wanted to read off a letter of commendation we prepared myself, the Deputy Chief for Officer John Thompson. Some of you may recall, we had incident with a gun that occurred last Friday night. And Officer John Thompson did an exemplary job in not only spotting the getaway car, spotting the offender, chasing him down, and apprehending, and locating the weapon involved. So I'm gonna read this letter off, place on copy of his personnel file. John Thompson is actually working the street tonight, but I asked him if he could get a chance to stop up, but he's probably busy up to his neck in something out there.
For sure.
To Patrolman John Thompson, from myself and Deputy Chief Robert Wood, this letter of commendation is presented to Officer John Thompson in recognition of his unwavering commitment to excellence and performance of his duties as a police officer in the city of Streeter. On February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at twenty fifty-eight hours, which is eight fifty-eight PM in civilian time, Officer Thompson displayed exceptional dedication to duty in the apprehension of a fleeing suspect who had allegedly pointed a firearm at a subject at a different location. Thompson showed determination in locating the suspect vehicle at a different location, and then performing a felony stop on that vehicle that was occupied by two persons. Thompson then showed resilience and perseverance as one subject fled on foot with Thompson pursuing him. Thompson, one of our newer officers, showed great situational awareness as he was able to maintain sight of the suspect, while at the same time providing radio directions to other officers of his exact location. Thompson's actions played a pivotal role in the apprehension of the suspect while ensuring the safety of the public. We acknowledge Officer Thompson's efforts and extend our sincerest congratulations to Officer Thompson for his outstanding performance. His commitment to excellence serves as a model for all law enforcement professionals. Just wanted to share that with you, Officer, all aware of what some of your officers are doing out here on the streets of Streeter. We're very proud of him, and we see great things for his future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. He's been, yeah, thank, yeah, thanks to Officer Thompson, but he's been on the force maybe a year and a half now.
Yeah, probably.
I think I looked up and saw his graduation, December of twenty twenty-three, so he's one of our newer...
One of our newer and one of the bigger members of our department.
He's, yeah, so if he's up to his neck in something, it's serious, yes, for sure.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to share that with you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other public comment for us? There, so we will go to new business, skipping getting removed item one, so we'll go to item two, which is a motion to receive and place on file playing commission's recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, I was gonna read twenty twenty five oh one and oh two.
You actually need the whole thing.
Okay, so Dave Rigley with the motion, and Tim Gary with the second. Any discussion? These are both at the playing commission last week. So again, just receive and place on file. None? We'll go, Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye.
Item three, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three, approving and issuing a special use permit to Schultz crematory and Schultz Funeral Services petitioner to allow for operation of a crematory at property currently known as One Elizabeth Place, Streeter, Illinois. Need a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, Tim, Gary, and Dave Connor with the second. And discussion for this.
Well, we give a memo to you for you tonight. This is former McGrath seafood restaurant, Schultz family, they own monument, crematory town, monument sale crematory, as well as funeral home. Had purchased the McGrath property, intends to operate monument sales and crematory at that location. The crematory requires a special use permit. They intend to have a couple monuments outside in the front for just for display purposes. Any storage in the rear of the property would be screened in under our code. Playing commission review request and the city code, and it's recommending approval.
Any comments or questions? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye.
We will go to item four, resolution twenty twenty-five oh five, granting an award of facade grant to property owner Anthony Michael, five oh six East Hickory Street, Streeter, Illinois, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. He get a motion and second.
Second.
I think that was Tim with the motion, and Dave with the second. Dave Connor.
This is a facade grant for Michael's recycling and disposal building at five oh six East Hickory Street. The memo provides a sample of what. So, in any case, the commission is recommending.
Any comments or questions on this one?
No.
Clerk, call the...
I think it's a good thing.
Yes. And the only thing I would just kind of ask is, we'll, so we'll vote, and then we'll get, if you want to have him come up for a second?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
We'll take a quick pause, we'll vote, and then we'll have to introduce you guys.
This is Officer John Thompson, the man I read about earlier, a high-standing police loop, does a very good job. The only man that makes me look small. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
They're hard at work.
The only thing I was gonna mention with the facade grant is, do we want to look at revamping or making changes to the project this year? Are we still happy with what we're doing?
With the facade grant project?
With the facade grants.
How many of this?
We're doing eighty percent, and up to fifteen thousand.
Is this our third or fourth one already this year?
First.
First.
Oh, this is our first?
The first one, they're usually first come, first served. If you're a second time, you have to wait till July to see if anything's left. Just that was my only comment, was that we want to look at how that progressed. Is there, are we happy with status quo, so? But...
It's working, don't change it.
Okay. Then I will call, I'll have Clerk call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. Item five, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four, amending section ten twenty-four two hundred of the Streeter Municipal Code, designating the intersection of Prairie Court and Danbury Street as a controlled intersection for the city of Streeter, Los Alamos, and Livingston Counties. Can you get a motion and second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion, and Tim Gary with the second. And discussion for this?
This is what Jeremy discussed before the race.
This, two meetings, yes, two meetings ago.
And this will be both ways, north and south?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any comments or questions? And Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
No.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. Item six, resolution twenty twenty-five oh six, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the county of Los Alamos for roadway, oil, and chip for streets within the Ave Creek Township in the city of Streeter counties of Los Alamos and Livingston, Illinois. Need a motion and second.
Second, Dave.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion, Dave Reed with the second. And, close to discussion.
Uh, thank you. So, in the last couple years, we've worked with Los Alamos County. As they're doing oil and chip on the perimeter of city, on this whole piece. This is a real big project that they've asked us to participate in, and to up sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, so, if you guys are okay with it, we'll, oil and chip basically the first fifty to a hundred feet of the corner lot off of Ave Creek, uh, in conjunction with the county.
So that's just what's in, like, city limit piece?
In the city limit piece, yeah, it's the city limit piece that'll bust their project.
Do we do this, I know we did it passed out there by the moose and stuff, I'm still gassed for it. We're still...
Every spring, they, they, if there's anything that's gonna be near us, they, they put in the request. Yeah.
So, it makes sense that oil and chip, what are you gonna do, it comes by?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any further comment or questions? Then I will request Clerk to call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye.
Item seven, resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven, approving the purchase of part of two oh two Pleasant Avenue by the city of Streeter, Los Alamos, and Livingston Counties. Can you get a motion and second?
Second.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion, Tim Gary with the second. And discussion?
Uh, this one, Sheriff put together a simple purchase agreement. We found out the lift station right behind City Hall here by the Lions Club Park, uh, a portion of the underground piping is actually on the snail property in two oh two. So just to clean it up, so that all the, the entire facility is on site. Uh, the snails have worked with us to sell off that little corner triangle piece. I think it's, uh, I think it's a triangle eighty by a hundred, I think, so it's pretty small, but it's all very good.
That's at back and behind your house, right?
Yeah, it, it's basically the hillside, it's the hillside, and then the little flat piece at the bottom.
Right. That'd be just about south of the lift station?
South, southwest, yep.
Comments or questions?
The rest, does that mine still runs on that bank too, doesn't it?
Uh, no, so, no, no, that's all been moved up and out, so there's no sewer that runs that bank. It used to run along there, but yeah, that's all been removed, moved up, uh, it runs on the alley of City Hall here.
Anything further? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. Ordinance twenty twenty-five oh five, approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Streeter and Jacobin Klein for redevelopment of Streeter Tech's increment financing district two. Need a motion and second.
So, second.
Okay, Dave Reed with the motion, Tim Gary with the second. Go into discussion.
Our existing downtown Tiff district includes the property that Bex purchased, bordered between the park and, and, uh, broad, uh, Bloomington, Kent, and, uh,
Broadway.
Broadway, I'm getting my streets mixed up. In any case, um, it's in the downtown Tiff district. There is sufficient life in the district to cover eligible expenses that we're currently negotiating over for that, for that project. And in order to really proceed, uh, we need to prevent our district to exclude the Bex property, create a new district for that property, and, and expand the downtown district to the west by, I think, three hundred feet. So, it's a, it's really a, uh, two issues. One is, uh, starting the process for creating a new Tiff district for the Bex property, and also to remove the Bex property.
So how big will the new Tiff, new Tiff district be besides that square block?
Well, that'll be decided later. We're gonna study, uh, that block as well as a quarter or leading up to Owens, perhaps including, including Owens. We'd like to keep our Tiff districts touching each other so that monies can flow between Tiff districts. Whether or not we actually include the Owens property in the new Tiff district will have to be decided later. And that's, will largely be based on assessed values. We don't want to have an inflated base value to deal with. And now with the closure, you would expect that the value of the property in the next couple of years go down. So it might be prudent for us to wait for that to happen, then Tiff it, in order to do a project. Now, obviously, if we get a development for the Owens property, all hands on deck, you know, but, uh, that's, right now, we're just in the planning phases of creating the district. We're gonna have to also work with the other tax jurisdictions through this process. So it's, it's an involved process, but there's a planning component and a legal component to creating and amending Tiff districts, and that's what these contracts can I do with.
So, yeah, and that was, yes, a question that was posed. So, this is just to start the process, and we're not approving district tonight, we're just starting the, we're just approving that, um, Jacobin Klein can start the work.
There's two different companies, Jacobin Klein is the law firm, they get pound development for it, is the other side, the consulting side. We'll need to do a survey of the property, uh, to determine eligibility for Tiff district. We expect that to filter pretty quickly. And for professional services contracts for Tiff, these are very difficult, from my experience.
Any further comments or questions? No, I ask Clerk to call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. Item nine, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh six, approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the city of Streeter and Jacobin Klein, LTD, for the establishment of Streeter Tech's increment financing district, for district six. Need a motion and second.
Second.
Please, Tim Gary's motion, Dave Reed with the second. Any comments or questions, discussion on this item?
Same comments that I was...
Same one.
They're, they're related.
Yes. Okay. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. Item ten, motion authorizing Iron Circuit LLC to install poles and sensor equipment along East Twelve Street to monitor train movement. Need a motion and second.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion, and Tim Gary with the second.
I'll basically just go up here to introduce, Jason Marvel is here to speak about this. Uh, and, uh, if you're familiar with the, his work, uh, he was with Flow, uh, Flow Technologies, that started the incubator, and so he has new business opportunity to bring to the city, and here you go.
He may have been the first, maybe our first candidate at the incubator.
He was one of them, yeah, I remember. So, just to give everybody some perspective, I think it was the summer of two thousand and fifteen, and I am sitting in Mayor Lansford's office, and it was pre-fit of the building. There is this contraption blowing cold air, it's, it's ninety-five degrees out, but it was not cool. We were all sweating. And I described to him, like, hey, I think there's an opportunity here to create this regional perspective for incubators. And he said, hold that thought. And I thought he was gonna kick me out of his office, he was negotiating some sort of contract. And so he makes a phone call, in comes Scott Wrighton, and they get excited because there is a, there's a building in town that they knew about, right, and that was the Armory Facility, um, that this, the, the state was decommissioning, or it saw that had plans to decommission. Jimmy makes a phone call, very quickly, we organize a group of community leaders. There is a pool of money organized to manage the facility or upkeep the facility, and up pops this incubator out of the Armory. And so, as one of the founding members with a group of individuals from Streeter, we really, I think, did some good for the community. Fast forward to last, this past August, in the shareholder agreement that was formed for Flow MSP, we set aside a pool of equity for the city as well as for the school. And so when Flow sold, there were proceeds that not only supported the incubator, but I think, um, almost twenty thousand dollars went to the school. So, it was a successful exit for our customers who were fire departments. It was a successful exit for our employees who all retained, uh, spots in the acquiring company. And it was certainly a successful exit for shareholders. So, excited to be back, um, to, uh, talk about a new idea that we've been thinking about for a while, and if it's okay, I'll kind of describe the, the challenge. So I'm sitting in an office of a fire department in Displanes, Illinois, and the fire chief is on the fifth floor of this administrative building. And there's a call that comes in, and I watch him get excited because he instantly knows what's happening, right? There's an ambulance, it's a stroke patient, and he is on the phone from the fifth floor, looking out the window, attempting to redirect the ambulance path because he can see from his perch that there's a train, and this train is one of these twenty-five minute behemoth trains that's gonna block that intersection. And when you are having a stroke, critical path to getting to the stroke patient is a serious concern. So what he's attempting to do via a cell phone is reroute the ambulance traffic, right? And I am trying to understand, well, what is the problem? Because I certainly understand that it's acute for this instance, and he said, no, Jason, you don't understand. I have twenty-two rail crossings in Displanes. It's acute for twelve hours a day, and they run forty to fifty calls, three quarters of those are E and S related. This problem is dramatic across the entire suburbs of Chicago. And so, I'm trying to figure out, well, what, what is exactly the problem? And the, the real challenge is, not only are rail cars, um, becoming longer, right? Because there's been several mergers of rail companies throughout the last probably five to ten years. Um, there are just challenges in their location, and that how long are they going to be blocking the intersection? So, we have come up with an idea to be able to use sensor technology, right? That's powered by the sun, so there's a solar component to the device. There is, um, a sensor that's embedded within the device that can be pointed across rail traffic or rail, rail tracks to determine time, speed, length of the, of the rail car. So we're then gonna feed that information to the cloud, right? And then that information can be distilled to start to make predictions on when and how long that crossing will be blocked. So you can start to make routing or adjustment routing, um, information to a specific location based on that intersection being blocked. There's a real opportunity to save lives, there's a real opportunity to be innovative. Streeter's always been that for me, so we're gonna come back to our roots and see if we can try to solve our problem. Anybody have any questions?
You just starting on with the one location?
For now, yeah. There, there may be a request or desire to tap additional, and let me give you kind of the framework, right? So, trains speed up and slow down, and so these devices are gonna have to be, uh, placed in locations that, um, you know, can help feed an analytics model to determine, you know, more accurately time, speed, and distance of the train, train times. Great question.
Okay.
I got a lot of questions, I'm trying to take which ones are relevant. Uh, you're just gonna do the south side of town first, right?
Yeah, we're just gonna put a sensor out, and let me, let me tell you the challenge, right? And this is why the timing of this is so important. Uh, rechargeable batteries don't like the cold. And so, we've been at this problem a while, and, and now we think we figured out a solution to ensure that the batteries don't run out of charge, right? Because if I'm only measuring when it's warm outside, I'm not really benefiting, because I need this twenty-four seven. And so, the beauty of the timing is, we're still in the dead of winter, we're still getting cold nights. We can test the, you know, the, the equipment piece of it. But then the secondary part is, okay, can we feed the data from the device to be able to then start to measure, you know, the length of the train? Because, as you can imagine, right, there, there are going to be things that may be passed by the device that pop up, and we're just gonna need to separate the wheat from the chaff when it comes to like, okay, is this a train or is this a... And that's a terrible example, but it's representative of sort of, so, the way we're gonna have to let the data sort of be distilled coming out of the device.
And this'll shoot both directions, more than solid on the tracks, or just one direction?
Yeah, and, well, so, it's gonna shoot one direction for now, but then we're gonna put, you know, again, predicated on this idea of going, well, we'll put one maybe at, at a distance down the tracks on the other side, so we can get the trains coming and going. And then again, we're reading from one device to another, reading from one device to another, to then give us some perspective on being able to then make that data start to speak to an analytics model that, that starts to get the prediction. There are other applications for this, such as, um, drugless cars, um, you know, mapping and routing technology. There are all kinds of sort of distilled, um, applications outside of, say, you know, how about an ambulance make her out, but this is where we're starting.
Questions?
No questions.
No, I just... Yeah, I'm glad we can help, and I appreciate inner, you know, innovation, and, you know, so, um, I am, you know, always glad to be part of, um, something new or different, and, so I, the industry's a great place, and we hope, we hope this project gives you success like the first one, so.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
This is gonna be a big, big thing for Big Six, too.
Yeah.
They, they, like Chicago, they don't have as many biodecks over or under the track and stuff.
Oh, and when you're talking twenty million dollars biodeck in fifteen years, forget, right? It's just not, it's not possible.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll go to item eleven, consent agenda. Need a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with fund warrant totals of seven hundred thirty-two thousand one sixty-six and thirty-six cents.
So moved. Second.
Tim with the motion, and Dave Connor with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
I abstained.
He's on one of the items since.
He's item D.
I wrote one of the letters in the consent agenda, so I'll, I'll abstain.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye. I don't, I don't know if it's a conflict of interest to use City Park for an egg hunt, but I appreciate your, your abstention for such.
Okay, we'll go to item twelve, which is discussion, an unfinished business. So item eight is a, um, location for the park board recommendation for pickleball court. So item eight is a location for the park board recommendation for pickleball courts. And this was to, Jeremy actually has a grant application where he needs a location to put this on there. Just looking through my packet here to see if I have it. So there were three locations presented. Let me scoot quick a little bit. Three locations presented at the parks board meeting last week. There was Oakland Park, Mariner Park, and the Lipton T lot as potential locations. And we had mapped out two courts per site. And I think Parks Board settled on the Lipton T because they thought four courts would fit there. So to, is any comment or ideas from council on proceeding? Or what your thoughts were as far as a potential location to fill in and try to apply for some grant funds for this?
Or add on Lipton T where they find out there goes up towards Main Street or back towards the back of the lot? And if they're looking there, does that mean that the city's not gonna ever sell that property and just keep it as their own? Or is that something they wanna start to develop?
And I can, I will give that one. I should go get our map. Do you have one?
I'll go get one.
Okay. So Lipton T was, they did a one, two, and three. So Lipton was their favorite. Mariner was the second and Oakland was their third. Of that. So they were rated one, two, and three. Jeremy has the map, which where the two were back closer to the alley. But yeah, if you're spending the money, I don't think you ever sell that property. It's a problem.
I mean, it's possible parking in there. I like Mariner. You got parking at D. B. Dr. Andy Park.
And restaurants.
Anything on cameras on that side you need to keep an eye on?
Or Public Works.
Yeah, on both sides.
Yeah, maybe on either side of it. And I think there's there's potential at Mariner where Public Works is. You could move part of the fence if you ever wanted to expand and put more in the back. If we move to Beadler at one point. That's all out there.
But Mariner, they're talking about putting in the back, too?
Yes, behind playgrounds, yeah.
Well, I think that playground needs to come out.
The playground needs replaced.
It needs, yeah. It's been there close to thirty years now. Hasn't been well-maintained like the one at Big Armstrong Park. But that's a whole different discussion. My first choice, like the art commissions, is I like the Lipton T building location. I think there's a lot of traffic. It's very visible. There's plenty of room to put in parking.
Cost will be a lot more. Double the roof.
So the estimate is?
Hopefully we'll get a grant and the cost will be somebody else's.
It wouldn't cover the full amount for adding parking.
My question.
Jeremy estimated thirty-five thousand per court. And I know LaSalle just did four courts for a hundred forty-four. So those two are pretty close. And to do a parking lot at Lipton T would be another approximately seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, my question at the Lipton T would be, we're talking four courts. Are they gonna be in sets of two fenced in? Or are they gonna be individual, all of them fenced in? Because you need a fence to keep the ball from going out into the state highway. So they're gonna be fenced in. But, you know, do we put a fence around two each? Or do we make four courts in one big fenced-in area? I don't know what they're thinking there. You know, four courts could be arranged a lot of different ways. So that would be my question to them.
And there's no way to temper the tennis courts order on, was it Apple Street? That the high school loses?
Oh.
Those are ours, right?
So, no, those are the high schools.
We just provide the lights to them?
Do the lights. At the high school, so that was something that came up is do you convert the tennis courts? But to play in like the districts, they can't have the pickleball lines on them. So that was, they have to be striked properly for tennis. So that was one that.
Like I've seen over in LaSalle where they've taken some of their tennis courts and put them on the pickleball.
Yeah, so if it's a recreational thing, it could be both. But if it's for, you know, to actually compete.
High school has courts all the way in the back, too, by the baseball field.
I don't know how many of them they use.
Yeah.
Just the front ones?
Do they use all of them? They use all of them.
Interesting.
And whatsoever I could.
I have mine on my desk if I.
But I don't, they go all the way to your back.
If I could be.
But anyway, that's not one of the three options. Like I started to say, my first choice is Lipton T. If there's not a lot of support for that, my second choice would be Mariner. But I would want to get rid of that god-awful playground equipment we've got there. And maybe push that fence that of the public works department, push that back to the west like it used to be before they encroached out into left field of Mariner Park. Now that was right field. But if we did that, that would make a lot more room and it would make a lot more sense at Mariner. But, and that wouldn't cost us anything because we could use our own personnel to do that. I don't think they're storing anything in that area that's really.
They can move some of this stuff out of that area that they.
Yeah, and move that fence back to where it used to be before it grew out into Mariner Park. And I think there'd be plenty of room at Mariner Park. I don't think Oakland would work mainly because of the trees. Anybody who got together some friends to go would have to take a push broom with them because there'll always be twigs and branches. Because those trees make big messes out at Oakland.
I didn't get the map, but one thing I did wanna say about Lipton T is Lipton T is going to require more money from the city because there's no parking, there's no landscaping. So if you want to improve that lot, not only are you taking out a lot that you could sell for commercial downtown, but the grant that we're applying for is from AARP. So the retired people. I'm trying to think what the AARP, the hard retired persons. Is retired.
American Association.
American Association.
Not that I know.
Not personally, but personally. So it's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Each court you put in is thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's netting, concrete, fence, the whole shitty match. So you're applying for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. If you start adding in the parking lot that Lipton requires along with the landscaping, you're gonna add a hundred grand to that project in a hurry. So that's just something for you guys to have as information as you look. Mariner and Oakland both have already in place. Oakland does have the benefit of bathrooms. But I think the park board talked about that and basically said, you know, pickleball games an hour or two and so the rest rooms might not be that important. But the other thing that Lipton T or Mariner would, if you were gonna stick a porta potty, do you want a porta potty on Main Street? So that's another issue, so.
Mariner, they could walk next door, though.
Yeah, and we can also, we were talking about that, yeah. Putting stairs or something, or ramps to get over to the Armory, because our facility's here.
I was looking at the concept plan here for Mariner.
Yeah.
You've got the two courts side by side. Would they, one fence go around all, both of those courts? Will they be individually?
We were showing two fences. And again, the reason for that, in that case, you could do the whole way. But there's a ramp there to access the levee. So the courts are separated, so you can still get a tractor crew to go maintain the levee.
Could you put them on that side of the platform there?
They could be moved around a lot. It's a large lot, especially if you move the fence.
If you do that, that way you only put one fence on for two.
Yeah.
Was there a hundred?
That'd be a little cheaper.
Yeah.
But yeah, I was thinking if you take the playground equipment out of there, you could reconfigure and put them around, one fence around both courts.
Oh, you did.
Like the high school tennis courts, there's one fence around all of them.
Yeah, yeah, that could be done.
That would save a little bit of money.
Yeah.
Might be a nice example. Yeah, we could reconfigure it. Say, the playground does need replaced. And we had received some insurance money for that one. So there is a little bit there to take care of that. So it could be one project.
And if you're talking about that, I know the park board, you know, wanted potential to increase to four. If you take out that playground equipment and move them around, you can get four.
You could probably get four right here.
You could get four.
Yeah.
You could, I think.
You could do it, two sets of two.
Yeah.
You could do four probably here. And then the playground over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the parking's right there.
So it looks like the consensus is Mariner first.
Mariner first and Oakland Park second.
They just, they need to want the list on the application because they wanna know where it's gonna actually be located. So you guys come to consensus, that's what, the application's due on the third of March, so I'll get it in.
So be good with proceeding with Mariner?
I don't think we're gonna get a consensus for Lipton T, even though that's my favorite. So I would, I would say Mariner.
Yeah, I know a couple people had said noise and everything, but you're on a, you're here on eighteen, too, it's visible. And the person's, I live right there, so I'm gonna have to be the one that listens to the noise, so.
Not that bad.
I don't think it's that bad, anyway, so. I, that's the only reason I don't wanna pick it, because I don't want it to be, but it's by the mayor's house. Because I don't play pickleball.
Yeah.
Yes, I might. But that's my only concern. That's mine.
Have they talked at all about basketball courts or they just strictly focusing on pickleball? There's a lot of chatter on Facebook about why we don't have any basketball courts.
In the figure, Splash Park.
The basketball is, I think, I don't think they talked about it at this meeting, but the Ozlin grant is, and the IDNR has a bunch of grants for park programs. And they like to fund things that the cities don't have. So it might be something for basketball, might be for a future we can put in for a grant. And if you show on the matrix that you have no basketball courts and we're trying to put them in, then you'll get points for that.
Well, I'm just, I'm not pushing for basketball courts because I know a lot of problems come with basketball courts. It's the reason we don't have any, at least.
That's okay.
Slowly took them out of commission, yeah.
Yeah, I was just passing out. We had that planning session. And there's a parks planning and inventory document that just went through. What we actually, what do we own and what? This was updated to include some dates as far as, for example, Big Armstrong Park, the playground equipment was built in nineteen ninety-eight. Central Park, the Tyler Playground went in in twenty twenty-one. So it just had some dates, so you could maybe plan a little more as far as when equipment ages. I know the playground at City Park was, it's probably about ten years old now. Looked like sometime between twenty twelve and twenty fourteen from what I could find. So it just goes through a lot of that type of information, just so that you have an idea of when was the last time we did that? Which brought me to some very interesting articles from Streeter's history. My favorite being Oakland Park. There was like a raw sewage ditch. And they said, oh, we'll just put trees in front of this. Back in like the nineteen thirties. So that was fun history reading, but, so this, anyway, back to the story. This is kind of our, the planning guide and ideas for each park and what could be done to improve them. And so the Parks Board, I've taken all those ideas and I've given them a survey to try to have them rate projects so that we can pick the ones that they think are most needed or important. And then we can take those projects and assign them and try to find what grant would fix or fit that project. So that's where that is.
I did see in the inventory, they're looking at Mariner Park, that the playground equipment was installed in nineteen ninety-five. And it even says it's very damaged.
Yes.
So I'm hoping we get that removed next year. I hope raise the money.
Right, next year, this year?
The Lions Club built that back in ninety-five. I was a teenager then. But yeah, that needs to come out.
So the minutes of the meeting can reflect if the consensus up or to recommend Mariner site?
I can agree with that.
You wanna copy that? I can. All right. I started shuffling papers. Our next item of discussion was trees on the burn over by Morel Street by the high school. Morel and Bloomington. So twelve feet, yeah. So tree in residence yard. Some discussion at our last meeting regarding this one. Where do we wanna kick off? So I guess the history on that is our, I think our ordinance says you cannot plant on the burn without permission. The current owner, or the property owner, had received permission from our former public works director. But there were safety concerns regarding being able to see when leaving the high school. Did it summarize where we are? Okay, perfect. So where do we wanna go with this?
Well, I agree with David. It's dangerous when you're going east on Morel, come to the stop sign at Bloomington. You can't see the traffic coming. In my car, I don't have a problem because it's short enough. I can see under the trees. Like I can tell you, when I was working and I was in my Frito-Lay van, it's quite tall and you can't see. I remember having to stick my head down like that to try to look under the trees. Got to where, when I was leaving Grant Street and had to go to the high school, I would go a different route. But I don't know, you know, somebody from the city of Streeter gave them permission. You know, how do we go back on our word? You know, it's not like they just did it and we can come up to them and say, tear them out. You know, we have an ordinance against this. We gave them permission. So it's kind of hard to go back and say, you know, we don't, we don't agree with what we said. Kind of puts us in a sticky situation.
The owner did, last year did remove one of the trees and had it moved. I think it was just one of the.
I believe so.
One of them, one.
Yeah, she was pretty upset. If we want to remove the trees, we'll need to make contact with the owner, offer to replant them on her property or somewhere else. And then I think we should reimburse her whatever cost she incurred in having the trees planted. That would be fair.
Yeah. Since we gave her permission and then she did it and we're going back saying.
If it's a, if it's a safety issue, that's what this council thinks. I think you have to need to address that safety issue.
Even if she took out every other one of them. So you could see, because right now there's, I don't know how many trees there, but there's enough that the trunks of the trees lined up the way you're looking down almost makes offense when you're looking to the south. No, looking to the north.
If you're in a school bus, garbage truck, who's got that actual thing out in front of his truck, semis, they all have to pull all the way up to the lane to see down. You know, you got the school bus, and then they're blocking the crosswalk, which is also bad. We made a mistake by allowing them to be planted. And, you know, it's unfortunate, but.
Yeah, so if we make them be removed, we should absorb that cost.
Right.
So you have you and.
You get to make the phone call.
I'd give it to Jeff.
We got three people in favor of it?
I.
Do we have three people in favor of?
I'm in favor.
Seeing that way?
Yeah. I'm, I don't, I don't love re, changing our mind when we do something, so, but I've three, four.
It's a safety issue.
So we'll let, I know Jeff had a couple ideas to propose on this one.
Yeah, we'll. We can get these being in to relocate them, settle them, or cut them out.
No, we can, if Dan Chris or we can, somebody can take them up transplant, especially the smaller ones, we move somewhere else. If she doesn't have them in her yard to put them, she wants them, we can put them in a park somewhere and put, put a little plaque that says donated by Dr. Ackerman's, or you know, Dr. Miss Ackerman, whatever.
Do we need to make, there were a couple notes on here from our last meeting, do we want to make any changes to our current ordinance?
That's something we need to do is take that ability, and that ordinance take out with permission and just wait to know.
To know. So it says no, our current ordinance says no person may perform any of the following acts without first obtaining a city permit. And it says plan on city-owned property, trade for remove, which would include, like, right away.
It's just easier to have a bright light wall.
So we'll look at updating our ordinance.
That's what I brought up, too, about the setback in the corners from twenty feet to maybe twenty-five or thirty feet. Because I've noticed places, I told Jeremy, by First and Baker Street, heading south on Baker, you get to that corner, you can't see cars coming because the bushes here on the left, that block you looking down the south and see cars coming, you know? So there's a lot of, a lot of little things out there that they can do to move, especially around our schools and places where, you know, be able to, kids come back.
Any further discussion on item twelve B? Okay, we'll go to city official comments, item thirteen. Any comment?
Just like to congratulate our new firefighter. What's his name, Dustin Holland?
Yeah.
Yeah. Congratulations to him, hope he has a nice long career with us.
That was on my, I'm in the, so, uh, March third, I mean, is going to Academy. And we have one other firefighter also going March third, there's two, that'll be going to Academy though, coming up shortly. And then again, welcome Dean Chalky to the, to the group. And that's, yeah, Chris Knight, any?
I do have a comment. And so we have released a request for a proposal for Southwest Collection, as I call collection services. I have a meeting scheduled for next week with interested vendors. I've talked to a couple of different companies in the vision of waste management. And the, the bid opening will be in the, on the second Wednesday of March fifth, eighth of, of the end. The reason why is if we want to move to a company other than Waste Management, they need to have at least six weeks' notice so that they can acquire the carts. So we'll open up bids, we'll probably need to schedule a special meeting so that, for that Wednesday, so council can review the bids and, or the contract, in order to meet a March one start for the new service. It could very well be Waste Management.
March or May?
Did I say March? I meant May one start. But the timeline isn't, the difficulty of May one is not in equipment and personnel here to pick up the garbage, it's, it hurts here if we move with a different company.
Do we have to take the votes better in that instance?
No, the way I wrote the, uh, the R P, because it's different services and so forth, so, yeah, there's only a couple of months between the first and the second, you just want to stay with the first or, or move to the, if you have issues with the first, maybe. You, that's your call. I think it's better, even if we stay with them, by getting bids, we're gonna true a bid from them possibly. Right, it's likely rates are gonna have to be increased because even in current costs, it, it, what we're collecting is not sufficiently to cover the cost.
We need, we need to, did you say we need to put like an ordinance or something in where, whatever, whatever they increase our cost, if our cost go two percent, then increase our, our fee two percent.
We'll need to cover whatever the costs are after the.
We should never lose money on something like that, we should always, we should never, you know, if we're paying, we're collecting a million dollars and it costs us a million and three, we should be charging our residents to make up that million and three, we shouldn't take the cost.
That's.
Never does unfunding our projects.
Right. So just put a note, place hold for, for that Wednesday?
Second Wednesday.
Yeah, you have a meeting, and then the second week you're off, and then the third. What's, plan on meeting on that second?
So we meet the, March fifth is our next council meeting, that's Ash Wednesday. March twelfth would be the second Wednesday?
Yeah, I think that's the opening.
Okay. And then our, the nineteenth would be our, the next meeting.
Right, but if we go with the nineteenth, we're not.
Right, if we not wait, so plan a special meeting the twelfth.
If we choose to go, right.
If we open them on the fifth and we know we're gonna make a change, we'll have to leave on the twelfth.
I have to give them enough time to put the proposal together, so.
So maybe the twelfth, maybe not.
We'll have a bid opening that morning. Plan on meeting, we always game over if something comes up.
Okay.
We'll put, we'll put a notice out.
Any other city official comments? I'll get, request a motion and second to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Dave Connor with the motion, Dave Reed with the second. Clear color roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye. Adjourned.